Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the August 3rd council meeting for the city of Cannon Falls at order. Could we have a roll call, please? Bringle.
Here.
Duncan.
Here.
Gesmi. Absent. Cronenberger.
Here.
Lundell. Absent. Montgomery.
Here.
Althoff.
Here.
Would you rise for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, approval of the agenda. Is there any additions or corrections?
I'd like to add an item to council business about agenda formatting.
Okay, so we'll add that under council business, item C.
Council agenda format.
Council agenda format, okay. Okay, anything else? Okay, a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of the council agenda format.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Duncan, a second by Montgomery to approve the agenda with the addition as for, as we said. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay, we'll get right into public hearings. The first public hearing we got tonight is Resolution 2563 certifying unpaid utility charges to be collected with taxes. That is something we do quarterly. The council decided years ago that we would not shut the water off to, for delinquent water bills, but instead we submit the bills to the county to be collected with taxes. Is there any? That being said, is anything, Neil, you want to say? Okay, then we'll open the public hearing certifying unpaid utility charges to be collected with taxes. Anybody like to talk to the public hearing on that?
As I was sitting here, John, I was looking through some numbers and, correct me if I'm wrong, but you got like $23,000 or $4,000 doing?
Twenty-four.
Yes, and isn't one of them $10,000?
Yes.
Okay, so back to shutting somebody's water off? And I don't know who it is and it doesn't matter to me, but somebody needs their water to be shut off. Not just me, if you know what I mean. John.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Is that possibly, Neil, is that a business perhaps?
It's an apartment.
It is, okay.
Well, these delinquent bills have gone way up. I think three months ago it was very little and now it's $24,000, like $24,000 now. I'm sure they're watering their lawns, but, that being said, anybody else in public hearing on unpaid utility bills? Third and final call. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. And I take a motion to approve Resolution 2563 certifying unpaid utility charges collected with taxes.
So moved. I'll second.
Motion by Montgomery, a second by Duncan to approve Resolution 2563. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay, item B, it's Resolution 2570. It's approving the establishment of a tax increment financing district number 2-10 within the municipal development district number two and the adoption of the tax increment financing plan relating thereto. Laura, you want to take that?
Good evening, Mayor and council. The EDA has a project that has presented itself that will get us closer to ticking off a couple different of our strategic goals for the year, all in one swoop. Tonight we'll have a presentation from Mike Boobani representing David Down, or David Drown Associates, and he will be describing the details of the taxable increment financing district 2-10, and I think that he'll be able to resolve a lot of the clarity to the cloudiness that's surrounding the project. And with the EDA, with this project, it'll get us, with your approval, this evening, it will get us one step closer to not only redeveloping the former Cannonball Truck stop lot, but also helping to take part in the affordable housing or some of the housing needs that we have in our community. So with that, I'm going to turn over to Mike Boobani.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Thank you for letting me present to you tonight. So the way I thought I would approach the presentation is to spend just a very brief moment in time talking about tax increment financing in general. I won't go too far in the weeds. I understand you had a TIF presentation back in March of this year, but for the public's sake, I'll just hit the highlights. Then I'll transition into the type of TIF district we're dealing with tonight, the things you need to know regarding that, and then the project specifically itself, okay? So tax increment financing, all we're talking about is property taxes. Nothing weird is going on. So the apartment complex, when built, their property tax bill will be calculated and paid just like any other property. The only thing that's different is that we're going to isolate the new city, county, and a little bit of the school taxes and redistribute those funds differently. Those funds will be isolated, sent back to the city with its, every six months, its tax settlement, and those funds can be used to assist the project. So whenever we talk about using property taxes to assist a project, tonight it's TIF, other times it might be tax abatement or some other method, property taxes are collected over time, but somebody's got to do the project today. You've got to pay the contractors today, which always means somebody is borrowing money. Somebody is taking on a risk, right? You're taking a risk that you're going to build something, there's going to be a return. In this instance, what we're talking about is pay-as-you-go tax increment financing, where it simply says developer is going to front, other than a very small sliver of some public infrastructure costs, the developer's going to front all costs. And all we're promising to do is that if the apartments are built, if the value is increased, if they pay their bills and we actually collect those tax increment dollars, we will reimburse a portion of those back to the project as assistance. Whenever we use tax increment financing, generally we need to make a finding, a but-for finding, that but for the assistance, the project could not occur. We have a number of reasons to believe that is true in this case. We have a letter from the developer's financial institution of choice saying that they believe that the tax increment is necessary for them to fully fund the project. We have pro formas in the application materials to the EDA showing how the tax increment is needed to make a certain debt service coverage. You know, when you do a business plan or you sell an idea to the bank, they don't want to see the revenue just barely sufficient to cover the bank payment. They want to make sure that you have enough revenue to cover the payment plus have a little extra for cushion. They're targeting 1.2, 120% revenue to debt service, and they showed it with and without TIF, explaining the need for TIF. But unlike the TIF district that you did earlier this year, which was commercial in nature, in housing TIF districts, we have additional requirements. Law says that if we do this, the developer has to agree to reserve a number of their units to income-qualified folks. There's two levels of choice in terms of what those incomes are, and they are 20% of the units can be reserved for median income, 50% of the county median income adjusted for family size, or 40% of the units, and this is the level that the developer is selecting, 40% of the units can be reserved for families at 60% of the median income adjusted for family size. Doesn't necessarily mean those units have to be filled, but they do need to be reserved. And this is something that the city will have to work with the developer to annually certify that he's hitting those targets. Otherwise, it would be illegal for us to collect tax increment and pay him in that particular year if they do not comply. Bear in mind, if we take 40% of the units, I understand the building will be 75, possibly more, units. If that works out to a fraction of a unit, you round up to get to your 40%. And it doesn't necessarily mean the units have to be filled, but they have to be shown to be reserved, okay? Another use, another but-for finding for the, for tax increment, because there's no rent controls. The developer can charge whatever rent he can get, right? But because there is a limit on those units, those rents will be adjusted somewhat to try and help fill those units. Because of those lower rents, and I'll talk specifically as to what those are, there's going to be less revenue for the building as if it could have, you know, no restrictions whatsoever. They would generate more revenue than they would otherwise. So just another reason why the tax increment financing would be necessary for the project. Housing tax increment financing districts are long-term districts, and by nature, they need to be because housing projects are tough to pencil. Just ask yourselves, when was the last time brand-new apartment building was built in Cannon Falls? I think, I was told 15 years ago. It seems like it's been a number of years. I can tell you, I worked for a number of towns in and around southeastern Minnesota, and in many cases, the answer to that question is decades. It's been decades, and the reason it's been decades is because it doesn't pencil. When you look at the rents you need to charge to cover the debt service and the, for the construction cost, and compare that to the rents that are typically being charged in those communities, it's not even close, right? So that is just, again, another reason why the tax increment financing would be necessary. The developer has requested the full life of the TIF district, that's 26 years. There is a maximum dollar figure on the contract, it's 3.6 million. And so the way pay-as-you-go contracts work is you continue to reimburse the developer with the tax increment that comes in until we hit the end of the life of the TIF district or until we hit the dollar figure. If we were to hit the dollar figure early, we unwind the deal. It stops when that happens. If we get to the end of the 26 years and we have not fully reimbursed the developer according to the contract, we're not on the hook to cover any shortfall. So getting back to the pay-as-you-go nature of this TIF district, there is no financial risk to the city here. Either he pays it and it comes in and we pay the developer, or it doesn't. And then when we get to the end of the life of the TIF district, if we haven't fully paid him, that's not our problem, that's the developer's problem. What kind of incomes are we talking about? These will change from year to year, but right now, in Good Hugh County, for a family of, let's say, one person, that is, I'm just going to round up, $37,000 a year. For a family of two, it's $42,000. For a family of three, it's $47,000. These are not what we call the very low income, these are just low to moderate income levels. And again, there will be no rent restrictions on this. But there will be an adjustment in the rent. In the application material that the developer submitted to the EDA, he's showing, for instance, he's got his one-bedroom studio apartments going for $875 a month, but he's going to plan to adjust that down to $825 a month for the income reserved units. And in each case, he's dropping the rents about $50 to $75 a month, depending on which units are reserved for, for the income-qualified folks. And I understand there's been issues about, you know, what kind of income property is this going to be? Is this going to be Section 8 housing? And the answer to that question is no. And there's a number of reasons to why that is no. The first answer is the developer straight out says he will not allow for Section 8 housing. Every property owner has the right to say whether they're going to accept Section 8 housing vouchers or not, and he will not. And that is consistent with other projects he's been involved in. But despite his comment that he doesn't intend to do that, there's other reasons why it just isn't, it doesn't pan out. One is, Section 8 vouchers is limited to 50% median income for the most part, and we've already discussed that he's chosen the 40% at 60% median income, so by default, those income levels will throw most of those renters out of the mix. And further, HUD, who provides the funding to local housing authorities to fund the vouchers, they will only pay a portion of rent up to what they call fair market rents. And they establish this some formula. And the rents that they come up with are quite a bit lower than what is actually being proposed in the apartment complex. So if someone with a Section 8 voucher was to try and rent from this new facility, they'd have to pay the difference. So just as an example, on a two-bedroom apartment, for his income-qualified family, he's planning on $1,200 a month. But according to HUD, on a two-bedroom, the maximum rent that they will help assist, pay is $752. So that's, that's a huge gap, right? So the renter would have to come up with the difference. So because of the materials being used, the type of construction that's being proposed, this project is just too costly, it's going to, even though we're providing TIF assistance to try and keep the rents in, you know, marketable, they're just not going to be low enough to allow for that kind of housing, anyway, regardless of what the developer says. So I just thought we could clear that up. In the TIF plan itself, I thought I would just take you through just some quick points or highlights. Where's your page down here? There we go. I'm not going to go through all of it, but I will just hit the highlights. Okay, oop, I just went ahead. Well, first of all, is the budget. The budget is important because when we adopt a TIF plan, recognize it's giving the city the authority to do stuff, you cannot exceed it. So anything that's in the TIF plan, that's the max you can do. So one of the things that we try to do as a consulting firm generally is to make sure that the budget is nice and big and allows for whatever we need. And the reason being is, if you found that the budget was too tight and you had to make a modification later, you'd go through this public hearing process, again, there'd be more consultant fees. The only person that benefits is me. So what we try to do is keep the budget large enough that that should never occur, okay? And you see this here, it's a total budget of 7.2 million. That includes the approximate 3.6 million that the developer is asking assistance for, and it includes interest on the note and administration. The likelihood of the city actually getting to those figures is probably pretty slim. As I'll show later, this is based on a pretty high assessed market value for tax purposes that may or may not actually occur. It's based on inflation in the property, set at like 2.5% inflation, which may or may not occur. So my gut tells me is we're going to come in far below these numbers, but nevertheless, we make this budget large to make sure that we don't run into the modification that I talked about earlier. I did mention, and I should go back, that we are capturing all of the new county taxes, all of the new city taxes, and all of the, excuse me, just a portion of the school taxes. I'd like to point out that the school district will benefit day one from this project. The taxes that we do not get to collect from the school as part of this deal is operating referendum money, can't touch it. And then any portion of their taxes associated with general revenue, we can't touch that either. So day one, they're going to benefit somewhat from the new tax base being provided. Furthermore, if new families move in with kids, that's what they're really interested in. They'll be more interested in the kids than the property taxes because every new kid in the school district is worth, what, $7,000 a year in revenue? So the school will benefit day one from this. So this exhibit is just simply a map. The outside border is basically the city limits. That is the limit of Municipal Development District number two. The mayor, you had mentioned the TIF district number is 2-10. What does that mean? Whenever a city creates a TIF district, you have to have first created a general planning area. We refer to these as municipal development districts. You had one long ago, I don't know the history of it, but it was let go, and you established a second one, which is now quote terminus with the city's limits. So it's Municipal Development District number two. It's basically just an area you identify that allows you to do things like create TIF districts. And the reason it's 2-10 is because this is the 10th TIF district within that area. Exhibit two basically shows the market value that's in place right now. Remember, I said we only capture the new taxes generated by the market value increase, so any taxes associated with current value will continue to be paid and collected and distributed to the city, county, and school as normal. So nobody's giving up any existing revenue. We're only isolating the new revenue. Laura, is there a way to, oh, here it is, shrink that out. Okay, it's going to be a little hard to read. But basically, this is a projection of the tax increment revenue that was used to establish the budget that I started this presentation on the TIF plan. So here's that $200,000 of existing market value, and we're plugging in nearly 13 million of taxable value. That 13 million, for the most part, is being established by actual projected costs to build the facility, and oftentimes, the county assessor may or may not actually assess at that high of a level. If anybody's ever built a new house, sometimes you'll find you spent $300,000 to build the house, but you get taxed at $275. It's because, generally speaking, they won't assess based on construction costs. But nevertheless, we use that. And then we used a 2.5%, I know it's hard to read, but right here, there's a 2.5% inflation factor. So we take the captured tax base, we see it growing by that 2.5% a year, and we multiply that by the projected applicable tax rate. That's not the full tax rate, because like I said, a portion of the school's not included. So when this thing is first built, if it's truly taxed at that 12.8 million, if it truly is, we expect the tax increment to be around $200,000 to start. That's not their full tax bill, that's just be the tax increment portion of it. Right here is a 10% retainage for the city. By law, the city can retain 10% for administrative costs. You can't just willy-nilly take that money for administrative costs, but anything you can document, you can charge and transfer money out of the TIF district to pay the general fund. So Neil and Laura have spent quite a bit of time working on this project, mayor and council probably has as well. You could document all that time, assign a reasonable cost, and when the tax increment comes in, you could transfer the money to the general fund to reimburse for that time. Not to mention, that 10% doesn't necessarily have to be spent on admin. You can also use that 10% retainage to pay for, remember I mentioned there was a small portion of public infrastructure, just based on what had been negotiated, we think that cost is about $70,000. You can extract that $70,000 from this 10% retainage as well, okay? So that would be, you know, $20-plus thousand a year theoretically that the city could And then the balance would be the payments, and the payments would go to the developer. Payments would first be paid Payments would first be paid to cover the interest portion of the contract, 3.75%, and then the balance would be applied to principal. So if you look at the total tax increment revenue, 6.5 million available for the project. If you take out the interest, that's that 3.6 million from the budget. Again, the likelihood of these numbers actually being attained, I'm not confident in. I think you're going to come in somewhere less. But nevertheless, we use that bigger number to be safe. If you read the TIF plan closely, you'll also see in there that there is authorization to issue bonds to pay for project costs. City has no intent to issue any bonds or any debt, but we stuff it in there, again, just for the flexibility. So remember, the TIF plan allows you to do stuff. If I didn't put that in there, and then four years from now, you told me you wanted to issue bonds in this TIF district for some reason, and I didn't have the authority, we'd have to do the modification. So we just jam it in there and give you the authority right off the bat. This exhibit, really, the only column that's important is this one over here on the far right. And it basically says, if this project was built theoretically today without the use of TIF, if it could happen without TIF, and that tax base was available to the city, based on your current levy amount, how much would the taxes drop? What would be the impact on the tax rate? And in the city's case, it might drop a couple of points. So while this is a big project, when we think of this as individuals and the kind of money that's being thrown around here, but in terms of city governance, it's not huge, right? And this final exhibit is a finding that the council needs to make. And it basically says, okay, you're using tax increment, and you're getting this project. If you didn't use tax increment, what might you get? The argument would be, could you do something better if you didn't use TIF? Maybe it's not an apartment building, but could something else happen? And basically, what the finding is here is that we think that without the use of TIF, not only will the apartment not happen, but the project might just sit there empty for the foreseeable future. And the only thing you'd benefit from is inflation on the existing value. So there's a net increase in benefit to the city by doing the project versus not. So that's all the exhibits for the TIF plan. Okay, Neil and Laura, if I have not hit anything, let me know. But otherwise, I would simply take questions.
So do we, so this TIF money that we're collecting, you know, they're requesting water and sewer hookup. Is that how that's getting paid for?
Is that part of the $70,000?
No, wasn't it $129,000 or something?
Oh, it's the sack and wax piece. Right, so we have a variety of fees that are not, that have been waived. Again, if there's public improvement costs, those are eligible expenses within the TIF district. So sewer and water costs would be eligible. And then we already talked about the $70,000 as well. The developer's agreeing to buy the property with cash for $150,000, as I understand it.
Yep.
Now, that 10%, let's be realistic again. Based on the numbers I'm showing you, that looks like a lot of money, 20 grand a year plus if there's inflation. But again, it's all a function of what market values actually are, so.
I know there's been some questions on why we're doing TIF now when we're not 100% sure this project's going to go through. And I assume it's because there are multiple steps. But at the end of the day, we don't certify the district until, in this case, Keller Bartman meets their, you know, build their building and all that. Is that correct?
So the process would be this. If the council after the public hearing decides to approve the resolution, thereby approving the establishment of the TIF district, we need to inform the state of that action within 90 days. That doesn't mean the TIF is active yet because we also have to request certification at the county level because it's their software that does all the work behind the scenes. We won't be requesting that certification until next spring. And that has to do with the timing of property taxes and when we capture new value. So by waiting until next spring, we'll make sure we capture any value that's built this year, right? So 2023 would be the first collection of tax increment. So if something happens between now and when we request certification at the county, simple resolution, we decertify the TIF district and get rid of it. Does that answer the question, or maybe I took that somewhere you didn't want to go?
No, no, that's fine. I just, I'm trying to get some of the questions out there that we're seeing on social media and other sources that the public's been very badly informed on what's been going on with this. And I think you alluded to that at the top of your talk.
And so another reason why you would adopt the resolution now as opposed to later is simply because of, just my experience with developers, is that once they get through all the approvals, I understand there's some planning approvals yet to come, I think next week, they want to be able to rock and roll. And they want to know that this is in place. Otherwise, they want to, they don't want to waste any more time and effort and money on their end.
Right, because if we waited, if we waited to do the TIF later, the project could be held back another six months trying to do the steps that we're taking now.
Correct.
Any questions?
I apologize if I went too deep or too long into that, but this is my first time with the council. So I felt like it'd be better to shell out more than too little. All right, thank you.
Very good. Okay. Open up this public hearing. Anybody want to comment on the? Yep, come ahead.
Diane Johnson, 113 Prumos Lane. Lots of questions, actually. Have we done an environmental study of the ground so that it's not completely polluted with the stuff from Cannonball?
Yes, it's been.
Yes, there was a study done when they, before they did the demo last year of the Cannonball, and then they did different soil borings, and then they just did another pre-construction that will then certify that property that it's ready for redevelopment. And that just recently got, it was a Phase One environmental study, and then, excuse me, that will get registered with the MPCA.
There are no contaminants still?
Nope, nothing that they found.
Congratulations on whoever did the removal of that. The rent that they quote there, is that with or without utilities?
I'm Bob Keller from Keller Bartman. The one thing you'll notice in these new buildings is the rent, or the utilities are not included. But I have buildings in Red Wing that are, you know, new buildings. You're going to find out the water is sub-metered, so you only pay a portion of actual water that's used in there. You don't have all the service charges. The building covers the service charges. We have people in Red Wing that have two-bedroom apartments that are paying $47 for a utility for the whole month. And, you know, in Red Wing, our water bill is $125 a month. People have moved in. We had 112 families move in the last building across from the mail. And the first thing they all said is, why didn't I do this before? I mean, my utilities are so much lower, and they're actually, I mean, they really enjoy living there because that's the big thing about having a house as you grow older or whatever, your utilities are really raising, you know? And these buildings are so efficient. We have a total new energy code that goes from the ground all the way up, you know? And these buildings are built really well.
How many stories?
In Red Wing, we have five. We have five with underground parking. This will also have underground parking, which is heated and insulated.
And there are how many, I missed, how many stories?
Will be in here, what will be, three?
Three on top of the parking.
Three on top of the parking. If any question, I can answer questions if you just, is there anything to direct it to me?
No, 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 that's, thank you, thank you. And then just kind of a general comment. I know it's zoned right now, commercial, business, whatever. And looking at that property, I know we need more affordable housing in town. I certainly have no beef with that. I'm just wondering if that's the right place to put it? I mean, I can't, and you also look and say, there's really only nine units that could possibly have kids. Or maybe the two-bedroom could have, okay, so 22 units with kids. So you're not going to get that many kids for the school. So it's not like we've got a booming population. We've got the same amount graduating pretty much as when I graduated. But I just, I look at that and I say, to ask people to move into an apartment, it might be a beautiful apartment. I, you know, I have no question about that. But in the middle of a place where you've got Highway 52 on one side, 40 mile an hour highway on the other, subway, liquor store, McDonald's, that's not where I would want to raise a family or even retire. And I would think that maybe we could find a better location.
Anybody else?
David Olson. As business owners, we want the community to succeed, and we want affordable housing. We want it for our children, we want it for our employees, and we want it for our coworkers. If we don't have affordable housing, our children and our coworkers go other places, and we don't have the good quality workers here. The problem is, we do not have enough affordable housing in Cannon Falls. So our community is leaving. Our good quality workers are leaving. So we need to address this issue. Right before Dave Maroni left, I was willing to do a pretty good-sized housing project for affordable housing. Two-bedroom, three-bedroom, and four-bedroom houses. There were some problems with some of the people in the city council here, and so I decided to take that money and do a big project in Hudson, Wisconsin. I do believe that we still have an issue with affordable housing in this community. Is this the project to fix that problem? There's some questions that need to be asked. Is this project going to provide housing for our kids and our employees, or is it going to bring others into our community? If it brings others into our community, our children and our workers are going to go elsewhere. Is it the right location for a housing development? If not, it's the wrong project. Could this project hinder some of the current businesses where it's being located? If it is, it's not a good project. Would you be proud to have your kids, when they grow up, go into this housing development and raise their family? If not, it's not a good project. There's a lot of taxpayers, big taxpayers, in this room here, and we really like to make sure that our tax money is going to the right benefits and to the right uses. So think about this is, do you want your kids or your children or your grandchildren, is this a project to be proud about? Thank you.
Again, my name's Bob Keller from Red Wing, Minnesota, Keller Bartman Properties. I would just like to say, you know, demographics has changed as far as people moving and living in different places in Red Wing. We have very limited space. In the last, what, three years, we've added almost 200 rentals to Red Wing. And when you talk to the businesses in the area, we've brought in people like, when our building filled, we brought in all the workers for 3M. We bring in all the people at the plant. There's no housing in Lake City. So most of the people that moved to this area that work for Heat &amp; Glow live in our buildings in Red Wing. And people have a different idea of living today. The younger people, I had some kids that were coming out of the apartment the other day, and they came up to me and they said, Mr. Keller, you know why I live here? And I said, why is that? And they said, because we don't like cutting grass, we don't like trimming trees, and we're really just into having fun and having good experiences with our kids and riding bikes. And they've already had a house, and they're done with it. And, you know, I think as we get older, we still remember when we were kids and we think, oh, everybody wants a house, and everybody wants this little yard and stuff like that. This is a different generation. The older people want to get rid of the houses. They like being around things. Like, we have, in our buildings, we have older people and younger people. And it is amazing to see how they interact. That's why we call it multi-family. We are doing a 50-and-up building this next year in Red Wing, and part of that is because the older people, they do want the crafts and everything that go along with those buildings. But what we've found is the interaction and what people actually do in these buildings. We have large community areas. Some of our buildings in Red Wing have pools. You know, I drive, go to these places almost every day, and these people love living there. And the one thing, we have a couple of proposed projects, and they're right downtown, in these small towns. I mean, this is a little bit out of town, but we have some proposed projects that are actually right, we're taking up blocks downtown. And the new thing in the cities is to have stores under there and to have people interacting downtown. They love going to the library. You know, people say, oh, you know what, there's the liquor store, there's the gas station or McDonald's or whatever. But people actually like being around where there's action, you know? And that's a nice-sized lot, and we've seen only good things in Red Wing. People walking, that area down there needs community, you know? And when I drive through there since the road has been closed, it's just not the same place anymore, you know? And I think having another 79 families in that area down there will only, you know, add to, not only the business, but add to the environment. You know, there's great places, you can ride bikes on the side, you can go to, you know, the pizza place if it's still open. You know, there's a lot of neat things to do. And the other thing about the tax money, from what I heard from the gentleman here, what you have to realize is the land that's sitting in the Cannonball spot right now, taxes are 2,300, maybe? If I don't build this building, there are no taxes. You have $2,300 to work with. Those taxes, we're generating by building this building. And people have a real hard time understanding that. So leaving that sit there, you guys will get $2,300 a year. By me building the building, we take the taxes that we generate over the next 26 years and then put this back into the community. And I think for some reason, it's just, it's hard to wrap your head around it. But this is the way in these small communities, because the banks, when we started in Red Wing, we went to a few banks and they said, well, why should we give you a loan? When's the last time something was built? And ours was 20 years ago. We hadn't had a project done for 20 years. So we had to work at building our own project, getting our own numbers. And it took quite a bit of work on Andy and Ice Park to be able to generate that kind of income to do our first 61 project. Then after that, we started getting statistics. Now, if you look at the county website and you see, all of a sudden, people have statistics off of our buildings. But there are no statistics here to go off of because you guys have not had rentals, you don't, you know? All the businesses I've talked to, they're all like, well, we can't hire anybody because there's no place for people to live, you know? And we're full in Red Wing right now. So we've done those 200, we've got another 85 coming, and we've got some other buildings we're proposing. But without those, we're actually supplying the rentals for a lot of the engineers and all the new business people that are coming to the surrounding area in Good Hugh County because there's nothing else, no place for them to live. So if anybody would ever want to come to Red Wing, I will be happy to show you the buildings. I mean, we have high-speed elevators, we have big community rooms, patios, outside drills. We really try to make a complete living environment. We have dog parks with synthetic grass. What else? We've got tons of stuff. Oh, our playgrounds, pools, and whatever. And like I said, we're living in a new generation. Not everybody wants a house to trim trees and take care of anymore. They actually like pulling into their underground parking. So, just, but any questions, just let me know. And, you know, feel free to get ahold of our company, and I'll be happy to give anybody a tour in Red Wing. anybody a tour in Red Wing.
Anybody else would like to speak, public input?
Can we make one more comment?
Good evening. My name is Steve Bauer. I own the John Deere store south of town here, along with the antique store next to it, along with the auction center next to that, and also, the whole entire area there. Behind that, I have five acres of land where, there's ten tractors sitting right now. I think if this goes through, I would like to have this rezoned residential, so I can build houses back there for people to live. I can park those tractors right across the street, in my other parking lot, and I want to redevelop this into housing. I think this is a great idea what they're bringing to town, but it's absolutely in the wrong place. Why don't you go east a half a mile, and get some land from Good Hugh County, or there's land out there, to build a new road, there's sewer and waters there, it's out of sight, it's a beautiful place, why don't you go there? I want to, I'd like to have an answer why you don't go further east or someplace else. This twenty-three dollars a year is peanuts. I'm paid eighty thousand dollars a year, property taxes in Cannon Falls, eighty thousand dollars a year, is what I'm paying. I'm paying tens of thousands of dollars a year on water, water storm sewer. I don't have it. I'm paying for it, I don't even have a storm sewer. Why am I paying it? Go to the restaurant, order a steak, pay for it, but don't get the steak. It's stupid, downright ridiculous. Look at the money I spent on that end of town. Look at that antique store, it's one of the busiest businesses in that town on the weekends. The John Deere store brings in millions of dollars worth of business to town, and we're going to put an apartment in the middle of a parking lot? This doesn't make no sense. There's more land out here. There's lots of land available. I can see why they want that, was it a hundred and fifty thousand's the purchase price? I'll buy it tonight yet. You want to take a check? I'll, I'll bring you cash. Twenty-three dollars a year taxes? It's peanuts. It's worth that, you can rent it out for, for a thousand dollars a month. There's other things, bring something else to town. Bring a place, a parking lot, to park semis, motorhomes, or something else to bring to town, for the rest of us people can get some income off, rather than a housing project in the middle of town, there? I got nothing else to say, but I hope to hell you got some common sense involved in this decision. Because if you don't, I'll be back for my rezoning.
So Doug Rexago, I'm the business right next to it that no one's mentioned. Tried to been a good neighbor for fifty years. I've owned it for forty years. And this gentleman that so elegantly communicates with people, has not communicated with me, or no one else has. And you say there's bad publicity out there about this. I just found out about this a week ago. But I realize that I'm probably not quite in the know like everybody else. I just work my butt off, and probably don't, you know, communicate, or look on social media like everybody else. The unfortunate thing, I, I'm all for this project, a hundred percent. It's just a, on God, terrible believable location. I have been there for forty years, and the codes, the zoning, the ordinance that our forefathers thought about, and put out there, and said, hey, businesses got to, you know, this is a business district. I, what they have thought about earlier will protect me, and others, today protect you tomorrow. Now we're switching to ordinances, businesses. My business right now, hey, we work on radiators, diesel heads. We are in the heavy-duty industry, very, very busy. In fact, one of my guys worked till three-thirty the other night. We worked outside, because that's where we do a lot of our teardown and such things like that. We've been coming in at five o'clock in the morning. We work for people like FedEx, and Ziegler Cat, and Ryder, and Metro Transit, and two-hundred other businesses like that. What are people going to do when they see, my shop has some smells, noises, lights, issues, and I know everybody will sit there and say, no, no one will complain, but, you know, just like the airport, everybody built around the airport, and then they complain about the planes. So I have not complained about anybody for forty years. The Cannonball, my good friend that owned that has passed, and everybody got along good out there, but I cannot possibly believe that once they sit there and, you know, smell this, or do that, or whatever, that somebody will not be complaining. When the fifty-two got closed, before that was closed, I don't know how many of you have been driving out there, but there was such a backup, right by Subway there, to get on that road, that people would cut across the parking lot through the Cannonball, and come out now where the other driveway is for McDonald's. They come out both ways now, and I was working Sunday afternoon there, and there was five pickups with motorhome, or, sorry, trailer, I was, campers behind, and then there was a pickup with Tri-X, he was parked in there, and there was two semis. And now you are talking about closing that down, just having one entrance and exit to there, plus adding possibly a hundred and fifty cars, or a hundred, or whatever. I can't possibly imagine how you're going to get out onto that road. I, I have the business right there, and it's difficult. Sometimes I just take off to the right, rather than crossing right now. Nothing to say about with a hundred and fifty, or a hundred cars, whatever it is, I, you know. I just think, we need this, absolutely. But there is, I couldn't possibly imagine, in my wildest dreams, why anybody would even consider putting that right there. If, if the roles were switched around, and you had an eighty-room apartment house next to it, and my lot was, there was an empty lot right next to me, and I was sitting right here and saying, hey, I'm going to sit there, and I'm going to open a radiator shop, and I'm going to do some light welding, I'm going to do some painting, I'm going to do some teardown outside, I'm going to, there'll be some noise, we've got semis coming in and out, and everything else. We work sometimes, we work our butts off. So we're going to be out and about at night, air wrenches going, this type of thing. Would you please allow me to build right next to this building? And I, I just wonder how long it would take for everybody to say no. And if it's no to that situation, how can you possibly say yes to this? McDonald's, Subway, the bottle shop, Super America, no matter where these guys build, and I sure pray that they do build in town. They're going to get their sandwiches, they're going to get their bottles, they're going to get their Subways, they're going to get that, business is going to come to town, that's great. But build it there. Have you did a study on all of that traffic? How are you going to get them out there? And I am totally confused, on the one guy that it probably affects more than anybody, not one person, not even these guys, none of you, or anything else, have even come and talked to me, or just even said, gosh, could we just have a second? I'm all for kids. You guys, some of you guys know I've coached here, I am the head golf coach, I still coach varsity basketball. So I love kids. I don't know where these kids are going to play. I know they keeps on bringing up Red Wing, that they've got swimming pools, and they've got green space, and everything else. We've got swing sets for these fifty kids that are going to be there? We've got place for these guys to sit there and play? Or are they going to be out in the streets, along with all of these cars and semis and everything else coming in McDonald's? And then with eighty apartments, I can't imagine the dogs, and you say you got a dog space, well, it better be damn big, because I tell you what, after about three days of fifty dogs taking a dump in ninety-five degree heat, I'm going to be worrying about the smell coming my direction. So, hey, I love the project, you guys, that's wonderful, I hope you come to town. Please, pick a different spot. And I'm with Steve Bauer. You want that thing sold today, I'll, I'll give you two hundred thousand dollars for it. So, and then we will put a business there someday that makes sense. A quick trip, a Taco Bell, whatever, but not an apartment house. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jack Lucking, lifelong resident of Cannon Falls. Laura, thank you for all your work on this. I think you've done a lot of work, a lot of other people have too. Guys, we'd love for you to come to Cannon Falls. Sounds like you do class things. I've seen your buildings, they're very nice. If anybody hasn't seen their buildings, I've seen them, they're very nice. But I got to tell you guys, out there on that spot, we got to think of the kids. It is not right to have an apartment building out there. And I'm like Doug and everybody else, I love kids. But let's give them a nice environment to grow up in. Kids deserve that. You guys are in Red Wing. Coming into Cannon Falls, come down Highway nineteen, have you seen the forty-four acres for sale? There's a beautiful spot. You could put up, you know what, I don't know if these are moneymakers or not. I'm in the car business, there's a lot of months I lose money. I don't know if these are moneymakers. If they are, please put up two of them. I'd like to see the city of Cannon Falls help you, out on nineteen. Then we got all that other space out there, we could put more homes. The city could develop lots, and sell lots out there. You shoot right across down St. Ansgar's Way, pretty soon you're on the bike trail. Kids could get on their bikes and shoot across there. We got the roads going in, we got the roundabouts going in now. It'll slow down traffic. But the Cannonball site, Kurt Lupke was here, he'd be rolling over in his grave. And I don't know if you guys knew Kurt. I did, Doug knew him very well, Steve knew him, Dave knew him. He would not be for this. It's not the right spot. So please, city council, do the right decision.
Don Lanning. I have, so I came to gather information, because there was a profound lack of information that was offered to the public. I mean, ideally, I think the better way to handle this would have been to have an informational meeting, have some public input before getting this far. This was approved by the EDA in June, and now this is coming, now this is, it, and there wasn't even, there was a public notice in the paper, a legal notice in the paper, and that was about it. So when you talk about misinformation, or the public not getting the right information, it's because it wasn't offered, for one. So I, I wanted to start off with that. Now, listening to some of the information that I'm hearing, you know, from people, and also from the developer, it does sound like a very nice project, I have some questions that came from the comments. The first one came from Ms. Qualley. You know, you talked about checking off a couple of strategical items. What are those strategical items that are being checked off, exactly?
So for EDA, we set strategic goals every year, and this year, one was to redevelop the Cannonball property, and the other one was to help aid in the housing, the lack of housing in the area.
Okay. So then the next question I would have for the consultant, Mike?
Yeah.
Okay. You know, you talked about the school district, you know, a share of the money is going to be coming from the school district's budget, or a tax avoidance, or not paying the tax. I guess I'm not exactly clear how that happens. But there is a school district share that's listed in the TIF of nine hundred thousand dollars, nine hundred and two thousand dollars, that is not going to be going into the school's budget, correct?
There's share, there's a portion of the, maybe I should come up to the microphone. So like any other new house, new business, new apartment building, doesn't matter, there's going to be a tax bill associated with this new value. And the school will only be collecting, when they start to pay these new taxes, the school will only be collecting a portion of those new taxes, less than they would have if we didn't do the TIF. But the counterargument to that is, is if we didn't do the TIF, the building wouldn't be there, the school wouldn't get those taxes anyway, because if there's no building. So the city's, the school's not losing any revenue, they're just being asked to forego some new-
The gain.
The gain.
Okay.
But, but again, it boils down to, if you don't use the TIF, you don't get the building. So it's kind of a moot point.
But there is an option of doing something else with that lot.
Correct.
But, and then, okay, so then that answers the school district issue. Then, the other thing here, you know, it talks about, in section twelve of the TIF, it says, at least forty percent of the units will be reserved for low-income housing. And even though they said not, they didn't use the term low-income housing, when you look at Good Hugh County's guidelines for income, it specifically states, and I have it here, I can give you guys a copy of where I pulled this from, but Good Hugh County, when you are at a fifty percent adjusted AMI income, median income, when you're at sixty, fifty percent, they call that very low-income households. And when you're at eighty percent, they call that low-income households. And we are talking about sixty percent. So regardless of semantics, or how you want to call it, it will be reserved for low-income housing, okay? And then, you know, the last thing I guess I have to kind of get into is, this whole idea of this is, if this project is not financially feasible for the developer, I'm losing where it is financially feasible for the city. You know, for you to pay out this money, and then only collect half of what's being paid out, or, I guess I'm not, I'm not an accountant, so I'm not sure exactly how that's working. But, I mean, right off the back, you know, you listed the value, the current estimated market value of the property to be two hundred and twenty thousand, yet the city's going to sell it to the developer for a hundred and fifty thousand. So there's already seventy thousand that's being forgiven for that. So, you know, again, I just have issues with how the numbers are coming out in this TIF. The other thing that I have an issue with is, there's been no analysis of the financial impact on the school district that's already struggling. I also pulled up data on the school district. And the school district, right now, is spending more for every student than they have revenue coming in for each student. So the argument that adding kids to the school district is going to be beneficial to the school district, again, I have trouble believing that. Not to mention, okay, so, and honestly, you know, I get the affordable housing. I do get that. There's a lot of people that need affordable housing. But the real issue in affordable housing is the fact that there's a big discrepancy between ownership and rental. That gap, and that, that difference in the gap, is not going to be addressed here, because you're creating rental units rather than owned units. The idea, I would love to see more families coming into Cannon Falls, and the money would be better spent to, towards projects on single-family homes, and bring, you know, making single-family homes more affordable to young families, you know, and bringing those families into Cannon Falls, and that business and stuff into Cannon Falls. So, and then when you look at statistics, you know, if you go to city, you know, you said there aren't any, or, somebody said, yeah, you said there aren't any statistics. There are statistics for Cannon Falls. And if you go to cidad.com, you can look up all sorts of interesting facts about Cannon Falls. And Cannon Falls currently has a population of four thousand sixty-eight people, per that website, anyway. And there are a total of seventeen hundred and sixteen housing units in Cannon Falls, of which, twelve hundred and thirty-two of those are- are owner-occupied, which is about 71%. And 484 of those are renter-occupied units. So the ratio, so rental units, there's 28% of all of the total housing units in Cannon Falls are actually rental units. When you look at the Minnesota Housing Project, study that was done in 2019 for Minnesota, the stats for Minnesota happen to be 28% of Minnesota is renters and 72% are actually owned building, or owned units. So Cannon Falls does not fall too short of Minnesota standards. And like I said, it doesn't address the issue of renter, rent-to-owner gap disparities, and we should look for projects that are in ownership, that improve the ownership. And then, let's see, what else did I have on my notes? You know, and then the last thing, when you look at Section 31 of the TIF, one of the things in there is it says that this project is consistent with Cannon Falls zoning and ordinances. That is not true. You already know that you have to do, that it violates several ordinances. It's not zoned properly. And I am with a lot of the people that are talking about this. I gotta admit, when I came, I was thinking Section 8 housing. Mr. Keller made a good case for it, or actually, so did Ms. Bubani?
Mike is fine.
Okay, Mike. And so did Mike. So in that respect, you know, I guess I can be a little bit more respectful of that idea. But the one thing that still remains is that the cheapest apartment that they have on their list is $800 a month for an efficiency apartment, okay? The average Goodhue going rate, market rate, for an efficiency apartment is $731. So these apartments are going to be more highly priced than the going rate in Goodhue County. So, you know, I have, I just wonder how well they're going to be able to fill these apartment buildings. And if the developer doesn't fill them, they're not successful, and you're still not gonna get your money. So it just, I just have, you know, I just think that it would be better to work towards single-family housing in, affordable single-family housing in Cannon Falls. It would be better to bring employers into Cannon Falls so that people stay in Cannon Falls because they work in Cannon Falls. And, and then the last item is, you know, it says that it meets the city's development plan. Where would we find that development plan exactly? Is there a place to find that? Anybody? No, I've looked. Believe me. So, is there a development plan?
No.
Okay, so that's all I have. Thank you.
My name's Babel Gorman. I own the house right across the way here. I just sold it this winter. And it just so happens is that I was trying to rent that for $850, and it's been going on for years, and I've had nothing but problems, so I sold it, okay? Bill, you're talking about social media and misinformation. And, and I'm sitting here getting more confused. You did a really good job.
Thank you.
To helping get me unconfused. But when Mr. Keller talked about the taxes, it sounded to me, and maybe I misunderstood it, but you said that once you start accruing the taxes, that it's going back into the community. I think that's the money that's going in your pocket to subsidize this project.
To subsidize your home.
Yes.
The law that we couldn't get.
Yes, yes. No, I understand it, and I get that. But it sounded to me like it was going back in the community, but it's not. It's going back to you.
The portion of the, the school will go back.
Right.
That wouldn't exist otherwise.
So, anyway, of course, the community is misinformed, and I don't, for the life of me, understand why it would take six months to do this, 'cause you've done it in, how long has this taken? Month and a half or two? And I don't know why it's being done today, but this TIF plan is written for a housing district, and it says that right in it. And this parcel in question is in commercial property. And the EDA cannot independently declare a TIF zone as a housing district. The process is through the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission hasn't meant to consider rezoning the parcel, nor will it at the next meeting, from commercial to a housing district. On page 10, Section 31 of the TIF, the TIF district qualifies as a housing district. It does not, not yet. But I think that's what you're trying to accomplish. The city should determine land use prior to approving public assistance and tax increment financing. I call it, and it should be called affordable housing, because that's what it is, and Laura did say that, but we've all been under the impression that it's market rate, and it is not totally market rate. Now, Ms. Lanning talked about the EDA voting in June. I have the EDA's minutes here. They did not vote to approve this in June, nor did they in July at their meeting. They have not, period. And it says that on a cover letter, and it's not true. So if you're wondering why the public is confused, we have been told that this is market rate, and it's not. In spite of what we're being told, it's an affordable-rate housing project. The TIF is a public subsidy. 40% of the units are required to be occupied by income-qualified residents. In 2020, in April, no, excuse me, in March, the City Council pre-approved the Cannon Ball site for a redevelopment district. How did it become a housing district when it was meant to be a redevelopment district? And I think that's what these people are talking about, and it is not in the correct zone, and it should be. After all, we just chased two residents out of town by not simply giving them a variance on a single-family unit. That'd be Rick Knowlton. Yet tonight, we're giving a variance up the street on a split lot, okay? So it's confusing, and it's inconsistent. And it would be nice if we stayed consistent. That's what we were talking about with public comment, correct? This plan is not consistent with the city's development and zoning ordinances. As of tonight, this plan and proposal project is not consistent with the city's comprehensive zoning. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else?
Can I have one more minute?
Yeah.
Or could it only get one? I didn't know if you could.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Does, and again, I don't understand all of this. Does this TIF money, if they've got a good project, or a good location, can this TIF money go, you know, up the street, over the street, or whatever? Or is it just tied to this?
You can establish a TIF district where needed.
Okay. So that's, that's a good thing. So if we get a good place for this, you know, hopefully you can build there. And then, Laura, me and you have been friends for a long time, so I don't ever wanna break that. But when you said the EDA plan, and I, Babe, you've cleared up a little bit of that, but when you said it was our plan to get rid of the Cannon Ball lot, and maybe that was a mischoi, a bad choice of words, you know, I just wonder is, is it like, gosh, we gotta get our money back, let's get rid of this? Or, gosh, that is a great business location sometime. Might be five years, but it'll be fantastic. So I hope the EDA didn't rush into it and say, hey, we gotta get rid of that project and get our hundred grand back, or whatever, because, yeah, so, okay. 'Cause otherwise, then we're just running into, you know, we're throwing this on a lot that we say, hey, we wanna get rid of it, 'cause what a great place someday for business to move back into. And then I just was wondering if our taxes, you know, everybody around there, if they, if you guys did, heaven forbid, I won't even bring it up about taxes, 'cause hopefully this won't go through. And then, you know, even when these guys build at a good location, you know, when we, when the hospital, the school, remember, built four houses up there? I don't know if you guys remember that. Bought the old hospital for a buck, or ten, or a hundred, or whatever. You made them guys, four houses, build a park, just for four houses, so it'd be like six, eight, maybe 10 kids, you know, unless they're very prolific, maybe they had 15. But, so, you know, you had four houses, and you made them build a park, but yet we're gonna have 70 units here, and I don't see, you know, and maybe, I haven't seen everything.
Now, that park was for the west side. It wasn't just for those four houses. That was a west-side park.
Okay. But it wasn't there until the-
Well, yeah, it was in the plans, but it was-
Oh, okay, plan. So I just hope, you know, no matter where this gets built, I hope we think of our, these kids. 'Cause, you know, even, you know, say you ride a bike, I would hate to, I got nine grandkids and, you know, they come out to my shop out there, and I don't let any of them kids ride bike down that road. Believe me. They ain't riding a bike and they ain't walking down that road, not with the traffic the way it is right now. So if you built it there, and you want them kids to walk down to the pizza place, or down to a park, or downtown, make sure you got a life insurance policy on them. Thank you.
Sure, John, you go and put a west-side park in now, after I'm grown and gone.
Yeah, you're long gone, yeah.
A couple of things, and this is the confusion again, because all the data says about $3.6 million. But Mike, when you put, 'cause I can't say your last name yet, okay?
Bubani.
Yeah, it'll be a Bubani. Like the bubani plague, or what? So, so anyway, you had up there, where it went all the way up to almost $7.3 million. Did I miss something? Or did I get something confused?
The $3 million was the principal amount of the note. There's an interest component to it.
Okay.
So all the revenue combined was $7 million.
So by the time the 26 years runs its course-
If those projections-
Yes.
Hold true.
Right, right.
They won't hold true, but if they did-
It would be 7.3. Okay, so it is much more, it's double what we thought it was, is what I'm thinking. But what do I know? But I can tell you this from experience, in like 1985, they put the Midwest Importers Distribution Center out there, John, and you know what I'm talking about. It was 1985, and I believe it was $12.5 million, and this is only by memory, so maybe I'm wrong. Shoot me. But it sold like 20 years later for $2.5 million. And the city owned that, and we did tax increment financing, and there was a big to-do about that back then, and a confusion, because this is confusing, isn't it? I'm confused. But all I'm saying is that when Twin City Container came in about 20 years later, they bought it for 20%, $2.5 million. Thank you.
Good evening. Peter Bodett. I own the property on the north side of this property, the liquor store and subway building, for 35 years now, I guess. I know I don't look that old. But, thanks. But, yeah, sure, we'd like to have some customers across the street from us. It's not gonna make or break us, or McDonald's. I'm more interested in things fitting into the community. One, one idea, I was, Sandstone Ridge, is that the city owned that? Or is that back in our lap?
It will be shortly.
Is there anything, I mean, I know there's clay situations up there, but we got a brand-new road going through. We got four lanes going up there from back when I was on the council when that thing failed. And if you put a project this size in, the mitigation of the soil could be a possibility to, to put a building like this up there on some portion of that. And now we're gonna have a brand-new county road going by there, connected right to the school, St. Ansgers, you know, that, that way, which would have bike trail with curb gutter, plus access to the liquor store and subway. But, you know, I mean, so you can move the TIF district wherever we want. You can make that, that go away up there somewhat. The city maybe get something out of that property. I gotta believe they can move mountains. They should be able to. It's the size of the project that keeps us from doing anything on that soil up there, I think. And there's probably specific places up there that aren't as bad, I remember. And even if you had to fix the sewer and water to one specific area, even if you cut the other, you know, loose, I'm, you know, I'm not an engineer, but I hired one for the city, so I guess, when I was on Public Works, and, so I mean, it's, we can get somebody to look at that, see if that's feasible. Just an idea to make, make everything work for everybody here. So, all right, thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'd like to make a few comments. I think, I think we're, everybody's in agreement, we need the housing. I think, you know, we're just not sure that's the right place. I, I don't know, I guess I can, I'm kinda on the fence, but the possibility of the afford, you know, the housing and the apartments, it makes sense to me to do, go forward with it. Somebody mentioned something about the school. Superintendent Sampson has said if we got five kids there, it's a plus for the school district. And I think there probably be five kids there, you know, so that's gonna be, but here's a letter, I'm just gonna read real quick. My, my little laptop's going dead here, so I'm gonna be, I'm sat in a hurry. It's from the Cannon Falls Economic Initiatives. We heard one side of it. Here's a, maybe a different side. I'd like to just bring, bring it forward to you. As members of the Cannon Falls Economic Initiatives Corporation, we're writing to offer our full support for the proposed apartment development on the former Cannon Ball Truck Stop site. As a quick bit of history, our organization partnered with the Cannon Falls EDA in autumn in the demolition of the Cannon Ball in preparation for the site for redevelopment. We embarked on this joint project both to clean up the south-end business district and to accelerate the redevelopment of the site. Apartment housing development is a perfect use for that site. It will showcase to the people passing our community on 52 that we are a growing community ready to receive investment in housing, retail, or commercial property. The EIC supports the project for the following reasons. Cannon Falls has a significant housing shortage, particularly at the entry level. The much-needed residential growth from this project will benefit our schools, businesses, and workforce shortage. The impact of many new units will multiply the positive impact on our community. This project will benefit the south-end business district that is impacted by the intersection closing years ago, and could serve as a catalyst for future growth on the, on the south side of town. Lastly, there's a misconception that this is low-income or subsidized rent development. While a portion of the units will be reserved for individuals and families making less than the 60% of the area median income, this public's, this project simply means local affordable housing for new teachers, young people beginning a career, or seniors living on fixed incomes. These are the folks often unable to find affordable housing options currently in Cannon Falls, and the populations needed to build a vibrant community. EIC's mission is to encourage and promote economic development in Cannon Falls, and we feel this is the right project at the right time for our community, schools, and business. Signed, the Cannon Falls Economic Initiatives Corporation, John Peterson, Keith Myers, Phil Jacobson, Mary Reinhardt- Jacobson, Mary Reinhardt, Mike Lawrence, Jim Eltoff, Dan Massett, Greg Wolfe, and Diana Waltman. I just wanted to present the other side of the story from the Economic Initiative.
One more question?
Sure.
Diane Johnson again, and I appreciate that, and I think nobody here said we don't need more housing, affordable housing, apartments, whatever. Is it possible for you to postpone a decision on this tonight so we could actually look at like, uh, Sandstone Ridge? We could look at the stuff out on the east side of town to see if there would be a better location for this much-needed project?
What we're doing here tonight is approving the TIF finance agreement.
It's tied to that specific area?
Yes. Tied to the property or the project?
Project. It's tied to the district. Yeah, it's, you're establishing the district. I'm saying, can we wait and see, can we put it out on Sandstone Ridge? Can we put it out east of town? I, I have nothing that, you know, that bad, I'm not fond of TIF districts, but I know people use them. I'm just wondering, I'm with everybody else, I think the location is, is wrong.
So, could I say, so if, if these people, you know, everything that you heard tonight, but then you read the letter and basically, basically said, well, these people say yes, so what we said means...
I just want to present the other side of it. I, we were listening to your side and...
Yeah. And, you know, I, again, no one's talked to, you know, us that are right next to the project. I, I don't understand. If you had, what I, what concerns me is the laws and the zoning that protect me today will protect you tomorrow. This building goes next to me or some of these other, I understand the bottle shop, this, that, the other, they're going to get that anyway. Are you going to protect me when they complain about, oh, that guy's making noise at 2 o'clock, you gotta shut him down, everything else? Are you gonna, so these people, did they hear what we had to say tonight? And you're going to make the decision, these people haven't heard what, what, no one's come and talked to me about this, and I'm not just talking about one person. Again, I think everybody here is all for this project, 100 percent. These guys, it sounds like do a great job. It's just crazy location. Do you love kids like I love kids? You're putting kids at danger right there. I'm serious as can be. And I, and so I, I'm all for this project. I just think it's a business district. That's what it was zoned for. That's what people before you have zoned this for. They've said, no, we're not going to put apartments there. We're going to put a business there. That, you know, so I, I think you're putting kids at danger and everything else, you're not, you're not thinking of kids. They're just going to sit there and play in the pavement and dodge semis. And then did you look at the study for, uh, uh, traffic? Another 150 cars going in and out of McDonald's, one lot now. So I, I'm just saying, I, that's great that they wrote that letter. I wonder if they heard everything tonight, would they still go, oh, yeah, we're 100 percent for it? Or if they own the business right next to it that has been quietly and not complained about anybody else for 40 years, I wonder if they would say, oh, yeah, put it right next to me or whatever. So then somebody will complain. If no one complains about me and everything else and I, everybody leaves me alone, well, I still fear for the kids' lives out there, but, you know, I wish that them people would sit there and listen to this and listen to everybody else and you people listen to the community that it is affecting. And please, look at a different location, a great location for kids, dogs, and people to live. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I just have to, you know, um, I get it that you read that letter because they asked you to, you know, present that...
No, I'm just, I'm just going to give it on both sides of it here.
But in any case, that, that economic initiative or initiative committee or corporation or whatever, it said, one of the last things it said is that it wanted to improve the business district in the south end of town. You're listening to the business district of the south end of town. None of them think that this is a good idea to put that there. So I just got to say, when they, they obviously did not talk to the business districts on the south end of town.
Some of these are business people from the south end of town. Anybody else? Okay, we'll close the public hearing on the TIF project. The EDA is requesting a motion to approve the TIF agreement 2-10. What is the council's wishes?
Well, I'll start off by saying, when I first heard this with the EDA, I shared a lot of your opinions. I thought the location seemed questionable at best. And when we had that discussion, I said, what else could go there? And we talked about other food shops, we talked about gas stations, um, we talked about maybe shops on the main floor or apartments above. People doing their market research, those things are not coming to town. If those things did come to town, if we got another, uh, food shop like a Chipotle across from Subway, then Subway would be splitting their customers. Maybe one would stay open, maybe one wouldn't. We talked about the traffic. We've talked about the infrastructure of, and those are valid concerns when you talk about the kids. Sidewalks can be put in. Sidewalks aren't built to nowhere with nothing there. We can put sidewalks in. The road structure, um, that runs by Rancho Loco and then goes into the Ace Hardware Parking, South Park Pines, these kids will be closer to South Park Pines as a park than a lot of the kids that live in town. We've got 17 parks in town. We've got a ton of parks for a town of our size. And that's a, that's a safe road that's not on the main drag there. So what I'm saying is the infrastructure, if we go through with this, there are possibilities to improve. We understand your concerns. I've shared that opinion when this discussion started, um, and that was in the EDA meeting. To the business owners, what do we do if we turn this down? How long does that lot sit? What do we, you know, wait and hope for to take their spot? Or where do we push them to? At the end of the day, we've got somebody who wants to come to Cannon Falls. They are ambitious, they're going to bring people, and people have talked about a resurgence of the south side. And what I interpreted with that letter, uh, from the Economic Initiative Corporation, it wasn't the business district itself, it's that people will be living there. So the, the commerce would increase in that area. So I understand your concerns. I hear those concerns, Doug. I hear yours completely. I think there's a lot of things we can do, uh, to make things better if we allow this to happen. I don't know if as a city, saying, no, you're not welcome here, go build somewhere else and we'll figure out what we're going to do with the old Cannonball, and we'll figure that out later, and then wait another five, 10, 15 years with that lot? So I came around through discussion, uh, I came around through our meetings to be in favor of this. That's where I'm at.
I, Bob, I have a question for you. Did, did you folks look at other potential sites in Cannon Falls, some of which have been mentioned here tonight?
We haven't been offered any sites. We have a lot of towns that will, that want us to come and actually give us the land. So we're close here. We've seen a need, I've driven down that road for the last years and there's days it looks deserted. You know, we've had a really good response to, with McDonald's, we've talked to their lawyers. You know, if you see how they do their landscaping with the big rocks and stuff, and we've got that all planned out, so our, our landscaping will actually kind of, you know, actually enhance McDonald's and everything. And, you know, like I said, it is a concept that's hard for people to understand, but people today don't always want to be stuck off somewhere. They like to be in the action, they want to be close to stuff. People are running to the store or doing this and, you know, like I said, we've got our buildings right on Tile Road or Tile Drive and, uh, and, uh, or Tyler Road in Redwing. And, I mean, to see the people walking and going, they, they just walk to Walmart now. In fact, that was our biggest, um, hindrance when we first were going to build a building in Redwing, and, uh, people said, well, it's right next to Walmart. Well, it made me feel bad, you know, so I put in trees and we did some landscaping. Now people come up and say, I can't believe, I love living next to Walmart. I mean, they've actually embraced it. When there's a snowstorm, they walk over there. I mean, a lot of the older people don't even take their cars out, you know? And so you have to look, everybody isn't living the same way anymore. And, um, I, like you said, I do think that a building down there is going to bring life to that neighborhood. Nothing has curbs right now. So when you drive down there, it does seem dangerous, but we'll be putting in curbs and we'll have the new entrance, which actually is under that, we have the back entrance? There's actually two entrances, curbed entrances, which will actually slow traffic down. Um, you know, we've got the green spaces that have trees. I mean, you go down there right now, it's really desolate looking, you know? You get some nice trees in there and get some landscaping and green grass. We always put in, you know, sprinkler systems and, um, you can go by any of our properties. And, um, I just think that, uh, it, it may take a little bit to wrap our heads around, but, um, we're living in a different age, you know? But if you guys want to offer us some land, we'll be willing to take it. So, um, we had a, Neil was on the, uh, when we, because Zambroda, you know, we have a building going in Zambroda, a 57 unit. And, um, that's right downtown. I mean, we took up that, half of that block and, uh, a lot of times people say, well, where do the kids go? Well, we're close to the park, we got the library, we got the bank, you know, all those things. We were in the paper, what is the name of that paper that came up? Yeah. And, um, we actually had people calling from Denver the next day asking for apartments already for Zambroda. And so these were people that were born here, they want to move back. This, things like this can change. And, you know, earlier I heard somebody talk about businesses. You can't have any more businesses without places for people to live. People will only drive so far. And that's what we found in Redwing, is we didn't know where the people came from. This last, we, let's see, we opened up in October and, um, we were full within two, three months?
Little three and a half months.
We had a space, everybody out, we have like Louisiana, Georgia, Florida, all these people. I said, I've never seen so many license plates. They were taking the jobs. 3M needed 100 workers, you know, they needed 80 workers, now they need another 100 more, you know? And, uh, all these people, we did not have workers before mainly because they had no place to live. So I think you have to look at where are the people going to live? The new school teachers, they don't come here and buy a house right away. They usually live in apartment for a couple of years, they get established. Two years later, they'll say, oh, I think I'm going to get a house or whatever. I mean, if you want statistics, I know how people live. They don't move to a community and say, I'm going to get a job and buy a house. They want to feel it out. And that's what these apartments kind of help, you know? There's going to be older people, younger people, and then the people that work for the school system, government jobs, um, they'll say, oh, I want to live in this neighborhood or whatever, and this gives them time to really fit into the community.
But Bob, you didn't quite answer my question. Did you look at other sites?
We went by the hospital, looked at a lot up there. But other than that, like I said, we were not really showing, that was the main lot, correct? Yeah. Because we asked, you know, we said, what's available? Um, and in fact, you know, people came to us. We didn't come to Redwing. I mean, we didn't, Redwing didn't, we didn't come here. People came to us and said, would you like to build in Cannon Falls? So, um, that's where this all started from.
Okay, thank you. Lot of comments on location. This lot had been for sale for quite some time, and I know tonight we've already had two offers on the lot. Where were you guys before?
Can I speak to that real quick? So even though the lot's been filled in its level, that doesn't mean we don't have to export that dirt. So when you build, you actually have to have quality fill put in there. Well, that lot wasn't filled with quality fill. So even though things have been checked out, we don't have, you know, fuel or whatever, that all, that is not a buildable lot. And that's what people don't understand. So we have to, you know, export all that dirt and bring in new fill.
No, I, I understand that. What I'm getting at is that this lot was available for purchase for anybody who wanted to come and do it. They didn't. You guys, I'm assuming you did your market studies. I have seen, as I've driven, uh, you know, you go up to Inver Grove and other places like that, and where are these new apartment buildings going? They're going right along the major roads because people want easy access. Is the location ideal for most of us? Maybe not. But it is something that we really, really need in this town. And as people, new people starting out, uh, or people downsizing, that creates other housing options for those with larger families to take over their homes, purchase their homes. So I think, uh, now, I know next Monday we have Planning Commission meeting in which the full concept plan will be, uh, provided, and we'll have more discussion on that. And like John has said, tonight is just the TIF district. And why we have to move forward with it, because it was laid out that we can, you do that kind of simultaneously so that when you guys are ready to go and it's, it's a goal for you, everything is in place and you can start instead of waiting another six months. For those who like to say we keep putting the horse before the cart or the cart before the horse, whatever argument you want on that. Uh, as, as, along with Matt, I'm, I'm in favor of, uh, approving the TIF district. Also bear in mind, until it's certified, this can always be stopped if something unforetold happens. So that's my take on it.
I'm all for the building itself. I think it's, the, the designs that I've seen and the buildings that I've seen, they look phenomenal. I think it's something that would be great for our community. We don't have enough housing for younger folks. My daughter can't buy a house at 23 years old, you know, so there's a need for sure. I understand we're only voting on the TIF district and that's on the property, not on the building or the project. I would be more apt to approve if it was tied to the project versus the land. I am listening to, obviously only the people that are here, but it's not where we want an apartment building or what, that's what I'm hearing. So I guess I would tend to say, if it was tied to the project, I would approve it, but if it's tied to the commercial lot that it is today, then I would not.
Another thing, and John read the letter from the Economic Initiatives, um, the problem that I've seen over the years when we have public hearings is the people that show up to the public hearings are usually naysayers. The ones that are in favor of it, they're quiet and they stay at home and do not, uh, put their, uh, two cents in publicly because they, people don't like to be ridiculed. So this is a very common thing to see, folks like you are all good people, to come in and say why we shouldn't and, uh, it's, you know, obviously Laura does not favor this because of location, but, you know, to each their own.
Is Mary Jill still with us? Is Mary Jill still up there? What happened to her?
Could I, I, I do want to clarify one thing. I don't think anybody here, I don't think anybody said they're not for this project. So please, don't, don't paint that brush with us. We're all for it. I, I haven't heard one negative comment that they don't want this gentleman to come here and build this. It's just not the location.
Right. That's the negative part I'm referring to.
Okay, all right.
Oh, Mary Jill?
Yeah, me. Is it my turn?
Sure.
Um, I think one of the commenters, the, there are a lot of comments out there, but one of the commenters talked about statistics of rental properties in Cannon Falls and kind of hinting that we don't really need more rental units. I think sometimes people can look at statistics and they don't really tell the whole story because almost all of our rental properties in Cannon Falls are either income or age restricted. Think about Stone House, Freeborn Manor, uh, Park Street Apartments, Three Rivers, they are, you can't live there unless you're 55 years old, in some cases 62. And in the case of several of those, your rent is truly controlled by the amount of you earn. A lot... A lot of us wouldn't be able to live there because we make too much money. So I think we have almost no market rate rentals in Cannon Falls. And I think nobody's really been knocking on our door either, to come and put them in. So when we have a chance, um, I, frankly, I think we should jump on it. And I think it would be good for Cannon Falls to do this. And Doug, I hope nobody complains about the, the sounds and smells from your shop, because we don't want you gone either. Um, but, you know, we can all argue location, we want it somewhere else, but if you ask twenty people, you're gonna get twenty-five ideas of where to go. And I think the, I think the EDA has done their homework, um, the staff has done their homework, and as long as we can always pull it, if we don't like what's happening, I don't see any harm in approving the district tonight. That's all I've got.
With that said, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2570.
I'll second that.
Motion was made by Montgomery, second by Duncan, to approve Resolution. Uh, what was the number?
Twenty-five seventy.
Twenty-five seven?
Twenty-five seventy.
Seventy. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed?
Nay.
The motion passes three to one. Okay, moving on. Consent agenda. Consent agenda items may be adopted under one motion as presented, or may be removed for discussion, and resolution is council business. For you at home and in the audience, I'll go through the consent agenda. Item A, just in correct claims for the accounting period ending July 28th, 2021. Item B, MINDOT meetings for the July 20th, 2021 city council meeting. Item C, Resolution 2564, approving a variance and administrative lot split for Goodyear County Habitat for Humanity at 1206th Street North. Item D, Resolution 2565, approving a limited use permit number 2502-0038 with the Minnesota Department of Transportation. Resolution 2566, accepting Memorial Swinging Park Bench from Carol Emery to the Parks Department. Item F, approve Police Officer Hunter Hubner hire. Item G, approve the Art Org street closure request. Item H, approve the on-sale liquor license for the Grand O2 Event Center. Item I, approve the 2020 Freightliner Full Response Pumper Change Order. Item J, Resolution 2567, accepting a monetary donation of $6,000 from the Cannon Falls Fire Relief Association to the fire department. And Item K, Resolution 2568, authorizing acceptance of the sandstone property from Simcoe. Is there anything the council would like to pull down? Hearing none, I'd take a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second, second. Motion by Duncan and a second by Montgomery to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carried. Okay, council business. Item A, MINDOT Project 2506, in Cooperative Agreement 02739, the Highway 52 Roundabout interchange. Neil, you wanna take that?
Yes, uh, my computer is locked up, so I'm gonna wing it from memory. Um, this is a final pay request for MINDOT Project 2506, and a cooperative, and Cooperative Agreement 02739, which is the Highway 52 roundabouts back in 2013, I believe the date was. Um, the amount, uh, of the final pay request, I believe, is a little over $10,000. If you have it up there, please do the exact number for me, cause I can't get it up here on my computer.
Ten thousand, four hundred and fifty-five dollars and twelve cents.
And that is, uh, that is the final pay request of that project. Um, the only question, and I asked Mark Ti, who's sitting over here for MINDOT, um, how come it takes eight years to finish up a project? And, uh, doesn't make any sense to me, but I guess, uh, um, back when I first started my career in Zambroda, they had one that came in, it was ten years old, so they're really, they're moving up. So, final request, uh, ten thousand and change, as you said, uh, um, that'll wrap up that project and, and, uh, the next thing on the agenda is these guys wanna start another one. So, I guess it's, uh, we should get the other one done first and then, uh, get this one going too. So that's what we have.
What was that, final ten thousand, was that for rounding off the roundabouts, or what was that?
You know, at the end of a project, I think it's always the retainage. You know, you, you hold back a certain amount, and, uh, typically on a, uh, most projects, a ten percent retainage is held back. So, you paid, uh, and I'm really going from memory, is about 1.5 million for that.
Yeah, close to 1.5 million.
Yeah, one point.
Cities cost.
Five million, million for cities' cost, and, uh, this is just wrapping up the project.
We still shouldn't have to wait eight years to get a final bill. Well, at current interest rates, yeah, we made about six bucks.
I'll make the motion to approve the MINDOT Project 2506.
I'll second that.
Okay, there's been a motion, a motion by Montgomery and a second by Duncan, to approve MINDOT Project 2506. For, what was that money? Ten thousand, four hundred and fifty-five dollars and twelve cents. Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carried. Okay, Item B, is Resolution 2569, it's for the layout approval for Trunk Highway 19, pavement rehabilitation and ADA improvement project. Neil, I'll turn it back to you.
Yeah. Can I use that again?
I'm still trying to load that one.
Yeah. Yeah, this one isn't. So anyhow, uh, we have with us today, um, Mark Ti from MINDOT and Chad Seaman, um, the consulting engineering firm for the Highway 19 Overlay and Rehab Project that's, uh, set to be bid in December. Um, what they're looking for tonight is municipal consent, um, for the project. And with that, uh, the resolution, resolution also states that there will be two, uh, school crosswalks, um, supplied in that, um, down on Almond and then I think on your corner, or pretty, is it? On Vine?
No, it's the corner of, uh, Hurson State. Yeah, so on the, on the west side of the intersection.
So, um, that's what the resolution is all about. Um, we have the two here to answer any questions, give us a little bit of an update. Uh, we did talk about it at the, uh, Public Works Commission meeting. Um, they recommended approval of all the items that you see on your list. Um, I think the total was just a little bit over 66,000. What some of the items are, are moving, moving streetlight poles, um, they're narrowing the street. That means the streetlight pole is gonna be right in the middle of the sidewalk, we're gonna move them out to the outside edge, um, putting, putting in some conduit for future streetlights that, uh, when Highway 20 head north gets redone in a few years, I don't know when that's gonna be, but, uh, that conduit, when the city decides to change out the streetlights and make them all the same, that will be in there and all we have to do is run the wire. Um, it makes sense, uh, you're putting concrete over the top. Uh, few other things is moving, uh, some water valves that will ultimately end up in the middle of the curb line. You don't wanna be filling your water valve covers up with water as, uh, the spring and fall freezes and thaws, uh, it will, uh, create havoc and we won't be able to get on them. So some of them things, it's all about our infrastructure and the costs associated with that. Raising the, uh, raising the iron, the manholes, the gate valves, uh, are all in there. So, um, if you've got anything else to add, I think I'm getting close to hitting all the items. So, thanks, Joe.
I've got a question for you. So, I'm, I'm in favor of this. Where that crosswalk is gonna be, the pedestrians are gonna be protected with the stop sign for traffic that is heading east, but for the people who are heading west, ninety-eight percent of the traffic there turns left, maybe ninety percent uses their signal. There's a lot of people that won't signal and then they turn, or they don't signal and they fly right by. Obviously, studies can't predict the future, but with that crosswalk, the pedestrian safety, what have you guys found with that type of situation where there's a stop on one side, but there's not on the other, and they have the option to turn? I think it's a very unique intersection, to say the least.
I, I don't know, I'm aware of any studies where we've looked at that, um, so I, I can definitely see your concern, not knowing if people are gonna go straight there and they're crossing.
Hmm.
We'd hope that the pedestrians are watching for that and not going when the cars are coming.
He lives there.
Yeah. Yeah. So I, I don't think I have a good answer for that, in part, if you do.
I guess, you know, kinda looking at, right now, there's a crosswalk on the opposite side.
Correct.
Where you've got that free flow right of most of the traffic.
Yeah.
And, and by moving it over to the other side, it, it's gonna encourage not only use of the new sidewalk we're building on the west side of the road, but it's gonna put that crossing, yes, there are people that are gonna make left-hand turns without stopping, but it's gonna be, it's gonna be safer for the pedestrian, for the kids getting across there than it is on the other side. And, and so that's kinda what we're looking at. We'll also have additional markers, we will, you know, we'll put up signage saying there's a school crossing. For some reason, historically, people do pay more attention to those signs and those crosswalks than just painting stripes on the road. So, we, we do see that. Now, can we guarantee it? No. And are there things we can do in the future if a problem arises? We can look at it. Yes.
Any other questions?
Neil, I, I see our share is 66,000 and change. Is, is that payable in '22? I mean, I wanna know if it's '22 or '230.
Uh, part of it might be payable next year and the rest of it in '230, the way it looks.
Okay. Okay, so did we, did we budget? Do we have that in our '22 budget?
Remember when I talked about the contingency fund?
Contingency's, okay, gotcha.
Uh, some of this stuff will come out of water. We'll break it out as what it's, you know, there's water gate valves, there's, uh, sewer manholes.
Break it down by.
We'll break it out, um, what's appropriate for, uh, which department and which enterprise fund.
Okay. And this, what are you anticipating, a three to four month, uh, construction period?
I, I think we're gonna, we're anticipating being conservative, that would be the whole construction season, probably a start in the spring and then go into the October timeframe, probably, so.
So like, starting?
It's kind of putsy work.
Kind of mid-April to?
Yep.
Beginning of October?
Yep, that, that's the nice thing with the bid in December, it'll give the contractor the ability to start right away in the spring.
Okay.
Anyone else?
I'll make a motion to approve the Resolution 2569.
I'll second.
Motion by Montgomery and a second by Duncan to approve Resolution 2569, 66,770 and 32 cents, which I guess is an estimate though, really, for layout approval for Trunk Highway 19, pavement rehabilitation and ADA compliance improvements project. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carried. Okay. Item C, council agenda format.
Yeah, uh, we discussed this in our work session, that, uh, in the future, to move our public input item, which on tonight's agenda is item nine, to switch that to be item 10, and adjournment will be number nine, so that we, we will still hold public input, but it will be after official adjournment, uh, so it's off the, it's recognized, we still do it the same, but it is passed.
Off camera.
Yeah, and passed the meeting, so.
And would this?
We will gavel out and then welcome the public to speak, and we will sit here and the same as before.
And this would also apply to any of our other committees or commissions that have public input?
Sure. Absolutely. It can be uniform across all of our, yeah, it should be the same, uh, across the board for all of our committees and boards.
That have.
That have.
That already have.
Can put in them already.
Okay.
But it wouldn't apply to public hearing, public input, right?
No, no.
Nope.
Public hearing, you, anybody can talk there.
And it'll be this way, uh?
Starting now.
Starting now and moving forward.
At the next meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. You gotta make it.
Well, tonight too, cause we, if we're passing it before.
Before we get to public input.
Okay.
So is that?
Is that making that motion?
Yep, I'll make the motion.
And I'll second it.
Okay, motion was made in seconds by Montgomery and a second by Duncan, to move public input to?
After adjournment.
After adjournment.
And, uh, and for Luke in the control room, uh, it turned the cameras off when adjournment happens.
Okay, any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Carried. Okay, reports. Kyle, Chamber.
I'm moving slow. Sorry about that.
You had to sit for two hours.
Sitting a little bit too long. Woo-hoo. All right, I do have some great announcements for tonight. Um, the first one I will start off with is the Fall Citywide Garage Sale is scheduled for September 17th and 18th. Please watch the beacon for the issue of August 19th, it'll have the call for sale. And so, August 19th, the call for sales, um, and so hopefully, we can just flood that full and have a ton of garage sales. All right? Then, I did hear today that the Wine and Art Festival has set their 2022 dates. They are July 16th and 17th of 2022.
That's good, missed that.
That's, that's wonderful news, yes. Okay, um, and tonight was the Nights Out, National Night Out, and so hopefully those, I think there were seven parties. I hope they had a good turnout and, uh, the neighborhoods all got together. There is a circus in Dennison on the 5th, August 5th. That's Thursday night, 5:00 PM and 7:30 PM. Um, the tent raising will be at 9:30 AM, and that's quite an experience to see. So families, if you can get there. Then, um, on August 12th, is the Chambers Open Air Fair. We have thirty-seven vendors at this time that will be on the sidewalks of Fourth Street and Mill Street.
This time.
At this time. Right now, I probably have five applications out that have shown interest in coming. For us to get to forty vendors could be very easy, and that's a ton of vendors. We have five food vendors. So if you're looking for something new to eat, come on down, cause they're gonna be on Fourth Street and Mill Street, and there is such a variety. I mean, Mexican, barbecued ribs, crumble beef sandwiches, pizza, um, who am I missing? Oh, Knights of Columbus Sweet Corn Feed, they're gonna be there. So I mean, tons of good food.
Free hot dogs?
Free, oh, thank you.
I'll be there.
Ed and Mary will be very, very happy that you've mentioned that, thank you. Um, there will be free hot dogs. Ed and Mary Lawrence will be handing them out, actually from the Chamber office, and, uh, that's a good time. They're a fun group to have right there, and so, uh, please come on. And so, uh, please come on down. That was the fifth one. I knew there was one. Uh, Dennison Days, August 6th and 7th. I mean, they've got a full schedule down there, dances, breakfasts, everything in between. And, wow, I covered everything. Is there any questions, comments?
No.
Wowoo.
Thanks, Kyle.
Thank you very much. I hope everyone turns out on August 12th. Please.
Uh, Joint Powers Trail Board, was, there was, was there?
It actually got canceled.
That got canceled, okay. Let's go around maybe, uh, staff. Danny, you want to, got anything?
I guess the biggest thing today was the, uh, Ellingson was able to pull the new eight-inch water main underneath the river, underneath the Third Street Bridge, so that's in place. We've got one alley completed last week out of the two that we're planning on doing. We're landscaping our city parking lot, so that began, and, uh, our sewer cleaning's in progress. So that should do it.
Uh, Dan, just a question, uh, Third Street Bridge, do we have an, uh, estimated time when that will be finished?
Well, at the last meeting, um, it sounds like August is going to be mostly the deck pouring and September will be the painting month, so I'm guessing I'm just going to throw October out there. That'll, that'll be my best guess.
Well, we know because of the dry conditions, that means September, it's going to rain.
Well, they, they had November 1st as the date, but they're, they're, they're moving it up.
Well, no, I'm glad to see they got the water under the rivers.
Yeah. Laura? No? Joe? Neil? Uh, Mary Jill?
Sorry, I don't have anything else.
Okay. Nicole, got anything? Library?
Nope, nothing right now.
Okay. Man?
Oh.
Bill?
Nope.
I'm good.
You're good. You gotta go. Just a couple upcoming meetings, we've got EDA, uh, Public Works and Park on Thursday, you got Planning next Monday, Library Board next Monday. Okay, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Montgomery and a second by Duncan to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Okay, then I'd like to open the public input.